That clock is...
I'd like everybody to stand. Before we get started, I would like to just go and say that a long time alderman for the town, Mr. Royce Whittington passed away today. And of course, that's John. He's not here. That's his father-in-law, his wife Debbie, his her dad. So I'd like first, before we start anything, to have just a few second moments of silence for that family. Amen. Now, we're gonna say this place allegiance. After that, I'm gonna ask Alderman Garner if he would lead us in our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most gracious having the Father. Father God, I want to thank you for allowing each and every one of us to gather on tonight, Father God. Father God, I ask that you instoring us the right decisions for the betterment of our town. In your son, Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Also, before we get started, we have some guests, and I just want to recognize them. Tants Hughes is here. He's taking over as president of the chamber. And he's here with Ms. Whitney Hedrick. She is the, she's the director of the Vidalia Chamber. And any businesses that are here, they certainly want you to reach out to them, and they would certainly like to visit with you, meet you, and tell you about the benefits of our chambers in our local area. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask our clerk if he'll do roll call.
The town of Vidalia Board of Alderman Votes Hall for a regular meeting of the mayor and board of Alderman in the day of January 8th, 2019. Alderman Betts, Alderman Betts is noted to be absent. Alderman Doray.
Present.
Alderman Darner.
Here.
Alderman McFoyes.
Present.
Alderman Probst.
Present.
Mayor, let me record show a floor of the board is present.
Okay. All right. First thing, business we have, you have your minutes in front of you. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Counsel, have you gotten an answer to the question about adding the line reflecting the video in the minutes? The last two meetings I've asked, you said you didn't have an answer back.
I've got a discussion with Ellie May, and I've done some research, and I'll be glad to talk about that to you.
Okay. Right now?
If not, we'll attend.
But it pertains to the approval of the minutes.
You looking for a motion to get the minutes approved?
I'm just looking for a motion to get the minutes approved. Now, I'm trying to make, I don't think there's a, I don't think there's...
Because we don't have a report.
Are you looking, is it a requirement?
No, no, no. I had requested two meetings ago that a statement be added to the minutes, that there was a video of all of the meetings, so that if, so that that part of it becomes part of the official minutes of the meeting. So that a member of the statement was made that you can't put everything in there that we discuss, but that, you know, you have the highlights in it, which of course, I understand. That's not a, an accusation or, or anything like that. But by putting the statement in the minutes that you can refer to the video of the meeting, the entire video becomes part of the minutes. Counsel said that he was gonna check to see if that was something that we could add in, and last meeting, he said that he had not yet gotten the answer back, so I was following up on that.
This past weekend, I finished my research on that, and I have not had a chance to contact you and discuss it with you.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't think that was a thing for a town meeting. That's something I'll tell you about what I found, and then we can move on.
Okay. I'm requesting, though, as part of the minutes before approving the minutes, that that be added in.
I, I don't...
I'm gonna do it. I think I need to discuss my findings with you before we can do that.
Okay.
So does this need to be placed on that agenda for next month meeting day?
We got, we got minutes we got to approve.
Yeah.
To go forward. Either approve them or we, we not... Because that's the most, that's the most we ask for. What we do here, counsel?
I missed what you were saying.
We, we need to approve or not approve some minutes, or some people can vote or abstain or vote no.
I have the motion to approve or not approve.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I so moved that we accept the minutes with as necessary corrections, if there be any.
And I second that motion.
Say it by Alderman Garner. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
He said with corrections, but I haven't heard any.
If there, if there be any, if there be any correction, if there is, if there's anything in the minutes that need to be corrected that has been addressed by anybody on this board, if, that's gonna come right behind. I made the motion. It was seconded. If there's any unreadiness, they'll state their, what their unreadiness is, and then we'll vote.
Right.
That's right? Okay.
Okay. I want to ask, discussion-wise, what are we gonna discuss? What are you gonna discuss with her that we couldn't just, just have a discussion over that little bit? Because it is, as she stated, part of the minutes. I mean, is it, is it gonna happen, or is it not gonna happen? If we can make this a part, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with putting in a statement that it's, it's viewable, the entirety of the meeting is viewable.
It's not clear as to what the alderman lady wants to do. And I need to discuss with her what my findings were with these people, so we can decide what she wants to do.
The, the request?
I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do at a meeting like this.
Well...
My report to you.
I, I would, I would think this is a recording of the alderman of the city of Vidalia to take care of business as required of votes, but simple discussion of things, whether, you know, we might get, pick some people up, or you might not got somebody else, or could hear somebody over here. To make that your official minutes without, I don't know. I mean, but, I mean, the minutes are always there to just, to refute something if something was said, I would think. But to make it a, make it a part of a minute of every word that everybody in this meeting says, I don't see the...
I guess, may I? I see problem with doing what you want to do, and I wanted to discuss it with you, so we can see if we can resolve it.
Okay.
It's kind of mechanical thing.
Okay.
Nothing wrong with the concept of doing it, just the mechanics of doing it.
Well... The table's gone, but it was set up to record.
Well, I mean, it's, it's recorded. I mean, we're, I mean, we're, these bites are fed directly, directly into the system. I mean...
Okay. We're getting hung up early.
Yeah.
What's, do you, do you two? You want to make the you two part of the official?
Yeah. All I was requesting, the first time I requested was that the sentence be added, that for, you know, that these meetings can be viewable also online. So that all of, you know, because when, when we look at this, these are summations, and sometimes it simply says, after a lengthy discussion, a vote was held. Well, that lengthy discussion is not here. The points of that lengthy discussion is not here.
That's almost a deposition type of meeting you have.
If I could interject here, the, when the meeting is video recorded and it's put on our website, it becomes a public record.
Okay.
You know, as such.
So then adding a simple sentence in the...
How to get that recording made a part of the official minutes has some logistical problems.
Okay.
Long-term, huh, George? Long-term? I mean, to be able to go back and pull them long-term is what you're saying?
No, it's, it's, well, you know, we're discussing it now.
I'm just saying, we wide open on that.
The minutes, the minutes are on paper in a minute book. And how do you get a videotape in that minute book?
With the sentence in the minutes to refer to?
Well, I don't think that works, but that's why I wasn't gonna discuss it with you later. I just didn't think this was a place to sit and try to hash that out.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made, second. Alderman Garner, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
That was without, without any correction.
Roll call.
Okay. Do roll call. Well, Jay just stepped down.
You want me to call the roll?
Sure, please. Counsel can do that. Counsel can call roll.
Alderman Doray?
No.
Alderman Gardner?
Yes.
Alderman Corrigan?
Yes.
Alderman Probst?
Yes.
Okay. Item number one is review of our financial statements for November. And Ms. Moke, our CPA, is, I think, got a good report for us. And Debra, I think she also wants to bring you up to speed on where we're at with the legislative, I mean, our Silas Simmons, that does our independent audit, that return, gives it to our legislative auditor. So if you'd bring them up to speed on that, Debra.
Okay. The balance sheet is as of November the 30th, 2018, and it shows a total cash of 5.9 million, investments of 2.3 million, total assets of 32 million, total liabilities of 6.7 million, and a fund balance of 25.5 million. Statement of revenues and expenditures for the five months ending November the 30th show the general fund had year-to-date fund revenue of 409,000, with actual year-to-date fund expense of 3.2 million, and transfers in of 2.7 for a net change in fund balance of negative 108,000. The special revenue funds shows fund revenue of 6,303,000 and expenditures of 3.4 million, transfers out of 2.5 million for a net change in fund balance of 437,000. The enterprise fund, which is your utility fund and your convention center fund, showed total revenue of 5.5 million and expenditures of 4.3 million, and transfers out of 437,000 for a net change in fund balance of 829,000. And then you have your port and the industrial park and your debt service, which is the government-wide, and it shows year-to-date revenue of 7.2 million and the expenditures of 6.1, transfers in of 234,000 for a net change in fund balance of 1.4 million. The total net change in net assets over all the funds is $2.5 million. I provided the alderman with the budget-to-actual comparison. The department heads have also received the comparison also. We should be at approximately 58% remaining in the projected revenues. Overall, we are at 57% remaining balance in all the expenditures and 54% in revenues. The, the $2.5 million change in net position is, you know, primarily due to the Vidalia industrial facilities that was sold in July, and also a decrease in expenses, with an increase in sales tax revenue with little road construction costs so far this year. Well, we don't even have it in the budget. An increase in gas revenue from the industrial user with a corresponding increase in natural gas cost. Silas Simmons has submitted their report to the Louisiana Legislative Auditors, and it will soon be available for public inspection. There were two findings, and I believe Wes will be here to discuss those whenever he gets the report back as it's been approved by the Legislative Auditors. That concludes it, my report.
The preliminary report that we looked at, I was, I was very pleased with it. I was excited to see it. Had some good information on it. Now, I'll let him present that, just from what I've read, so. Okay. Number, there's no occupational license. Number two, Mr. Barry Richardson is here, and he has got a sign that's in front of you. As y'all know, Barry is, he's here with us tonight, and he's coming along pretty strong with his building, and I think he's shooting to be open middle of February. Okay. All right. Is any questions, anybody like to ask? Of course, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you if you're curious. You know, he's on that corner there. We, we have kind of a historic landmark there. The old, the brick column there that's got the lion on top of it. It's really a beautiful thing. But he says that it's not gonna be in an area that would interfere with the aesthetics of that, of that structure. So if anybody has a question, you know, Barry'd be glad to answer it. But if any of the aldermen have a question about the sign, or a motion to accept?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Corrigan. Second by Alderman Garner. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Barry. All right. Now, we also move on to number four, which is board consideration for approval of an amended beer and liquor license for Crows, Claws, and Tails. Barry, you want to address that, why, the switch, or? Because he had originally asked for just a beer permit only, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That was, we were, we were first in the state on being able to do a dual license, where we had to sell beer as a packaged item to be taken out of the store, to take out all this and stuff. We weren't allowed to put the square footage and adding more restrooms and stuff to the building. So what we were gonna do, we were gonna try and maximize the alcohol sales through adding a liquor license to it, along with the beer license.
Okay. Any questions?
Did you say to-go?
Like a packaged liquor.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
Out of the takeout section or the seafood market side of it, out on the restaurant side of it. But we couldn't do it because of the square footage and some of the logistics and bathrooms and stuff.
Just, just like a convenience store, like you walk in, you make a purchase, and you walk out.
Yes, sir. That's what that part was gonna be, where it was a seafood market, and also where the people that would take out the seafood or whatever, take out all this, that's where it was gonna come from, and with they had other items in there. Like I said, seafood and a few other items, and one of them's gonna be cold drinks and beer to-go. So do a package liquor. Couldn't do it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve this amended beer and liquor license?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Garner, or a second? Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five is board consideration for approval of a proposed new hire for Vidalia Police Department, Darryl Miller, as a full-time patrol officer. Is he here, and is Joey want to?
Joey, yes.
Tell us about Darryl. I mean...
We have a, we have a plot open. We lost the guy to place leave.
Okay. Is there any question from the alderman?
Is he post-certified already?
No, he's post-certified, and we have to have him ready yet.
Okay. No further question. I hear a motion, we accept.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Garner. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number six, economic development report by Ms. Sarah Heather Malone?
Good evening. I'll make it.
You want to come, you want to hand her, hand her a microphone? We will make sure to hear.
Hello. So I made some notes, so I would kind of keep to the point and move it along fairly quickly. But we've had a lot of good success this past year, and so we thought it would be a good time to come before the board and give an update on some of the things that we've been doing this past year, some things to expect within this first quarter of this year. So I'm gonna start with Town Place Suites. As most of you know, they have opened, and they are in operation. We're excited about that. Dion Smith is the general manager at that facility. He, I think he was gonna try to come this evening, but hasn't... There you go. But the facility is absolutely beautiful. If you haven't had a chance to go by, I'm sure he would welcome some visitors to come through and look at what they have to offer, but it's something that we can definitely be proud of here in Vidalia, and definitely showcases our riverfront and the beautiful Mississippi that we enjoy each and every day. They do have 25 employees out there at this point, and we did assist with a couple of job fairs in the area to get them staffed up. We will be having with, with the Chamber of Commerce, a grand opening after hours type of event in February, so be looking for some updates and invitations on that. But we would definitely want to celebrate and welcome them to the area, so we want to do that properly. Moving along to Syrah Technologies, they currently have 50 construction workers out there right now. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to ride by the facility, but there are a ton of cars out there and lots of work and activity going on. They've hired four full-time employees to date, and they've interviewed about 30 of those from job fairs that we've assisted with. They've been very pleased with the level of workforce that we've been able to offer, so kudos to all of us as far as the availability of labor and the ability to put them to work in those positions. They are in the process of commissioning the first portion of their milling line, and construction will continue on the balance of the plant, and they're aiming to start production towards the end of first quarter. So they are definitely moving along and trying to get into production and start making their products, so we're excited about that. The Vidalia denim project and the economic development grant that Natchez Inc. is administering for the town, an update on that to date. Approved expenditures equals $7,631,589, and that's for the spinning, weaving, finishing, and lab equipment that they've purchased. Of course, there's a balance of other equipment that they've purchased with, with additional funds that they receive from their, their lenders. So that leaves a balance of $371,286.46. Interest earned to date is $4,352.53, and administrative costs to date are $2,259. And those administrative costs include bank fees, and then the third party that was hired to, to review the contracts for the payments and to identify the equipment whenever it comes on site, and once it's installed, verify that the equipment that was purchased is indeed, indeed installed at the site. So as far as where they are, they received cotton at the where, at the facility, and equipment has begun to come in as well. We anticipate equipment continuing to come in through March. They've had to redesign the building layout to accommodate their air systems that they'll be putting in that's unique to their process. And they plan to have those air systems in the building upgrades completed in the March-April timeframe, is, is the latest update I've received. They hope to begin hiring if all of this permitting and everything goes as planned in the second quarter to begin assembling the equipment that's come on site. And therefore, we expect to hold, I know it's gonna take a couple of job fairs, but probably the first of the job fairs towards the end of this quarter is what we anticipate and what we're planning for. They anticipate production in the spinning line of the operation in June, so that will be the first line that they'll complete. They'll, of course, spin the cotton and be able to sell their yarn. They did receive some additional funding through new market tax credits, which will allow them to double their spinning capacity, so we're excited about that. And it'll allow them to get the yarn to the market quicker. On the Vidalia port, the, the current project is 71% complete, and the mill rights are expected to begin construction with a conveyor this week. We still have a, a scheduled completion date at the end of March, is what we're anticipating. Just as a reminder, I know this, these past couple of years, we really focused a lot on the recruitment of new industry and working these projects to get them to locate here. But just as a reminder of other responsibilities that we do uphold for, for the town and offer our existing industry visits, we do try to visit all of our major industries in the area to make sure that we understand, you know, where their challenges are and where their opportunities are to help them grow and recognize, recognize those opportunities and help them as they do that. We have seen that some of our industries have grown as far as employment is concerned and have been reinvesting in their plant, adding equipment or adding to their buildings, so we're excited about that. That means that this is a good viable place to do business, and we want to make sure that we continue that. Small business development, we work with our partners at LED and Small Business Development Center to provide some workshops and other opportunities to our entrepreneurs, both new entrepreneurs and old entrepreneurs. We want to make sure that everybody keeps up with their skills and tries to do the best with their business. We are hoping to have at least one workshop per quarter with Small Business Development Center at the Technology Center to try to bring more people into the area in addition to the other advertisements that we're doing to try to generate some interest in, in the building to, to continue to provide services there. Site development, we do want to get our industrial sites certified through Louisiana Economic Development Certified Sites Program. And what that will allow us to do is to kind of add us to the top of their list when they're talking to industrial clients, because it tells them that the site is essentially shovel-ready, that it has the infrastructure, it has, you know, everything that you need to, to do business there, and they have a quick turnaround whenever they want to come and construct and do a project in our area. So we have essentially all of the documents in place. Some, some documents we'll have to get updates on, like a phase-one environmental or things like that. But we are working this year to get at least one of our industrial sites certified, because we still have property both by Vidalia Denim and by the port, by Syrah Technologies. So we want to make that as attractive as possible. Workforce development, you know, we are certified work-ready community with Concordia Parish and in the Misslou area. And we've been working over the past probably 18 months to maintain that certification status. We hope to reach our maintaining level in February, and then at that point, they'll give us new goals, and we'll have to continue to maintain those. So we do take workforce development very serious, because without a workforce, industry will not locate here. So something that, that's near and dear to our heart. As you can tell, the successes, you know, from some of the things that we are doing, are growing success in our area. We see some new brick-and-mortar businesses popping up throughout town and throughout the parish, and we're seeing some houses move, and we're hoping that that activity will continue to grow as these industries continue to hire, and people are getting a paycheck, and things will be a little bit better throughout our economy. So that's why we do what we do, and I'll take questions.
Any questions?
Did I hear you say that seven, approximately $7 million of the $8 million grant has been given back to them?
Has been spent. You know, they had two years to spend the grant, and it had to be on infrastructure improvements and capital expenditures, and it's, it's going towards the equipment.
It was my understanding in the first meetings that we had when we kind of signed off on that, that there were certain benchmarks that had to be met in order to achieve those, and part of those benchmarks were employees hired.
Correct.
Have they hired any employees?
They've hired one employee so far, but...
And they've gotten $7 million of the $8 million back?
They have two years to spend the money, so the lenders required them to spend this money first, because there was a, you know, a time clock on it. But in the agreement, they have to hire, maintain employment for five years during what they call a test period. So every year, we will receive an audited report of their job numbers, and they have to meet the job benchmarks, whether it's, one benchmark is for payroll, another benchmark is for actual number of jobs. And if they don't meet those benchmarks, they have to pay a penalty, and they'll have to pay the grant back.
Is that how, any of y'all understood that to be when we first talked about it?
I'm like, yeah, I thought they had to have so many employees.
I thought the money, and, and, no, but, but the way that it was presented to us, of course, not a lot was presented to us, but the way that it was presented to us was, once they hired so many individuals, then they could get phase-one of their grant. And then if they expanded to the next phase of, of employees, then they could get the next portion of their grant. So they can get their entire $8 million grant upfront, and they've hired one employee. So we've really only sold that building for $4 million.
Well, I mean, but there, the reason why we required it to be in capital improvements is because that's an investment back into the community and back into the building. So it's hard costs back into the, that will ultimately be taxed and all of those things.
And when does the tax base start? Did they get a tax abatement?
They, they, not on the building, because the building was already on the tax rolls.
Will the improvements on the building, this capital investment that they're putting back in, will that...
They will qualify for a tax abatement.
For how long?
Up to 10 years at 80%.
So they have a 10-year tax abatement, and we gave them $7 million back of their purchase price, and they hired one employee.
But if they don't hire the employees that are in the agreement, then they have to pay you back.
Okay.
And Heather, what's the timeframe on hiring those people?
So they have, beginning January 1 of this year, they have to have their employees five years. They have to each, at the end of each year, over the next five years, they have to send us an audited report of the number of hires that they have.
And what was the number? Wasn't it 300 or something like that?
So for, just for the... So for, just for the, the project in general, it's a $9 million payroll, which roughs out to about 300 employees.
Right.
For the grant, so they'll have a clawback if they don't reach that, and then on top of that, there is another, they'll have to repay the grant if they don't hit 567 jobs.
And that's in how long a period?
Five years.
Five years.
And there's a value to each job. If they don't hit, I think it's $30,000 per job that they're under that 567.
And that's, that's how it was presented, and it was in that agreement.
Yeah, and the payback terms were in the cooperative endeavor, and, I mean, all of it was outlined.
And I promise you, I, I, look, I'd do it 100 times over for that, where we're at, and we don't own that building. I would take $4 million to not have the expense and the possibility of somebody coming to get that building, because other than that, you were having to insure it, keep it up, and hope that somebody get it. Because right now, when Food and Land left Louisiana, there are several more buildings like that in Louisiana that are empty that, you know, if they left them to those municipalities, that's a big expense on those municipalities. And I, I think that's a wonderful thing, and I, I think it, the hard work that y'all did and everybody did on pulling it together is something that I don't have a question about. I'm really excited about it, and when they get up and going, you know, it's, we're going to see a big change around here. I really do believe that. Plus, it's going to be a benefit for all the residents, because they're going to be, you know, providing jobs, putting people with money in their pockets, spending money at Barry's store, at Steve's Furniture Store, at your insurance company, everywhere all over town, and I think that's going to be something that's going to just multiply, and I think, I think it's a good thing, so.
I don't disagree with that, just to go on record, to say, and I don't disagree with that. The issue that was shocking to me is that they've already gotten $7 million of their grant money back, and they've hired one employee.
Well, let me ask this. I mean, if, if we stipulated it had to be for capital improvements, they have to make those improvements before they hire anybody to come operate the equipment. I mean, so it, and that's why we said 24 months. We didn't want them sitting around and not doing anything, you know. We wanted them to, we wanted them to spend that money, because, you know, that means that they're getting up and operational, so.
On the job fairs, is there an expense to the town for those job fairs?
No, they qualify for Louisiana Fast Start, so the state of Louisiana coordinates essentially that whole process. They did ask us, you know, to help them identify locations to hold the job fairs, and for Syrah's, I know the Technical College offered space to do it at their site, and I know that we did offer, if they needed, another site that we would, you know, try to get. I think we got the Convention Center for Town Place Suites to do their...
I'm going to give the first one. What's the first place that offered to?
The Technical College. So, but as I said, for Town Place Suites, you know, the Convention Center, we didn't utilize the Convention Center, and I, I assume with Vidalia Denim, with how large, you know, their, their staff will be, they'll have multiple job fairs, and we will probably need an area as large as the Convention Center to do that. But as far as advertising expense and all of that, Louisiana Economic Development handles all of that through their, their incentive program.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Heather, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Number seven, I'm going to let Alton McCoy introduce this, I'm sorry.
Introduction of ordinance amending ordinance 678, setting seven for a town clerk. When we first came to terms with Jay, it was at extremely, I didn't think that, I don't think any of us thought that it was a good salary for the amount of pressure that he had, and we, we, I think we've had some conversations in and out about that, and in the whole struggle with the budget, that was the one thing that I wanted to say, let's make sure we get our city clerk at least up to par or somewhere close, because the range is this big in what he's getting and what was it out there earlier for that position. And since that position is controlled by ordinance, that ought to tell you the importance of the job. So I thought it necessary that we bring this before the board, as I, I think we'll be amending a lot of parts of this, this budget before we get to the end to do it again. And I think that there should be an increase in our city clerk's salary. And if any of you have any idea of the magnitude of what he's responsible for, and what he's, the challenges that he has, I think you all would agree with me that what we're paying him now is, is not even fair compared to his job responsibilities. And I, I think we should, we should really look at that real closely.
Okay. All right. That introduction's made, and just for everybody knowing, and on number eight, we're going to go on to number eight, we're going to introduce our utility-grade ordinance, and, and that's going to be made available to the public, and then we will meet on it, and it will become to a vote at the next, our next regular meeting, and you have time to review that, come in the office, or it will be advertised. And there will be time for public comment on both of these at our next meeting, so. Okay. Number nine, I need board approval for the town of a day to enter to a cooperative endeavor agreement with the village of Ritzcrest. We are donating them one of the surplus Vidalia Police Department vehicles. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It's actually a governmental, intergovernmental agreement.
Intergovernmental, okay.
Which is almost the same thing as cooperative endeavor.
Okay. All right. So please note that change, and we'll let the minutes reflect that when we do those. Any questions?
I so move.
All right. Alton, Doray's made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alton Probst, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, number 10, is board approval for the town of a day to enter to a cooperative endeavor agreement with Point Man Ministries and transfer funds for the Vietnam Wall project. We've had much discussion on that last time, and all I need to do is have that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alton McGarner.
I have a quick question on this. In, in the, when we talked about it last month, we named a place. I noticed that that has been removed. Was it because we were going to form a committee to find the best location, or the copy of what we had last month?
I think what we just said, that would be, to be determined, the location of it. And, and I think, now, Doug, I know, but, you know, I think that needs to be determined that, you know, what would be the best suitable place for that. You know, I think that's something that we would have to, go ahead, Doug.
In consideration of the location, Mayor, we, there are two, a couple things we need to consider. One is by document, it was agreed previously that it would be on the south end of the Vidalia Riverfront, which is match record. And then the other thing is the funds that we've collected to date, those people largely participated in those donations to support that wall based on the fact that it would be in a preferable venue such as Vidalia Riverfront. To not do that, we, I would view that or think that would be problematic, inasmuch as we, then these people believe that's where it's going to be, and if it's not, then somebody has to explain why.
Okay. Well, my only thing is that I think we've researched, we haven't found, did we, did we check the minutes to say, I don't think we've been able to verify that. I think you have a, a signed document, but as far as a governing body approved, and it might be completely fine. I just want to tell you that, you know, we agree, you know, if that's something that you've got, and it was ratified and approved by the governing body, you know, it's just ironclad. However, on the other hand, I would really question putting it on that south end of that riverfront, because you know what? That's the lowest part there, and if we have an event like we had in 2011, you know, that wall's one in the water, you know, unless you put Hesco baskets around and be something else to protect. And that's something a lot of the citizens right now are still sensitive about, putting more things down there to protect, that you have to, to do those things. But Bill, go ahead.
One other comment, I'm sorry, I don't want to get rough, but I don't know, I haven't looked at the research, I don't know what you found, but the document says that there is a word for it.
Right, that's correct.
It makes it, it does, so it's a large, small, mid, and they don't be involved in that process.
And, and what he's saying, Doug, is honestly, there's an authority that handles that activity on that. Now, they would have to approve that, because the town itself cannot go in, because that authority was established back when the riverfront first was...
Not saying they wouldn't.
Not, yeah, I'm not, we're not saying they wouldn't, and they probably would honor any kind of agreement that's on the record, but I just wanted to let you know that it's, it might not be a slam dunk that, you know, that that's the case. But we, I tell you what, tomorrow, if you want to show it, we'll, we'll look in it, we'll go pull everything out and, and get it ironclad for you.
If I might comment on your suggestion about the flooding, thank you for making that suggestion. The company that I work for is actually an agent for aqueducts, and aqueducts have been used effectively for more than 30 years. They have been instrumental in something which you can't really to, they prevented the women's hospital in Baton Rouge from going underwater in the last big flood they had down there. They're very effective from a cost standpoint, from a, from a point of view standpoint. The only thing that we would need to build this board, the total cost of what you would not incur, we would do that as, as Point Man International Veterans with the assistance of veterans and whomever else wants to help. But we can protect that wall down there using an aqueduct, no cost to the parish or city or the town.
Okay. Well, if you want to holler at us tomorrow, I'd be glad if we'll, we'll research that, and I appreciate it very much and what, and your work you do.
Ms. McAllister, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you make the statement at the last meeting that $300,000 would be needed to build the wall?
That is, the basic cost is $300,000 for the wall, and then we would also incur other infrastructure costs, and part of our original agreement was the town of Vidalia participate in site preparation, utility, access, and that. But yes, the basic cost of the wall is $300,000.
Okay. If you don't mind me asking, how, how far along are you with donation?
We, to this date, we've got $22,000 that we have paid for the wall, the total price of the wall. And on that note, I would share with you too, that we have people literally from Monroe, Indiana to the Cape of Mississippi who are saying, you know, let us know how we can participate in putting this become officially documented as to the location and the projected completion date. And that is correct, $300,000 is the basic cost for the wall.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. You made, Alton McGarner has made the motion, second by Alton Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number 11 is discussion of a formation of a committee to review the town of a day's current animal control ordinance, and of course, a lot of people will remember our last meeting where we had this discussion, and I wanted to put this on there to actually bring up, this is strictly for the board. Anybody in the public who does want to participate in this, we're going to open that up for you, but I would like to get two board members to participate in this, and I'd like volunteers from the, from the council to, who would like to serve on this committee.
Well, number 11.
Yeah, number 11.
You're all in with the...
I'm all in.
Okay.
Surprise, surprise.
Alton Doray, does anybody else want to?
I do.
Okay. And Alton McCoy, so. All right. Now, at this time, can I have a motion that we enter to an executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alton McGarner, or a second?
Second.
Second by Alton Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, would you please announce the purpose of the executive session?
Pardon?
You have to announce the purpose of it.
It's for personnel matters, and don't know how long this will take. If the chances are, we'll come back and make a motion to adjourn, so if you want to stick around to hear that, you're welcome to. But anyway, thank you all very much. Okay. Do I hear a motion that we exit the executive session?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll make that motion.
I'm going to pick Alton Probst, second by Alton Doray, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Alton McGarner, or a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alton McCoy, we adjourn.